Hey, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for August 24, 2023. It is 6:05 PM. And can I please have everybody stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Last thing I will do is put this here. Okay. So first thing on the agenda for tonight is discussion and possible vote on which of the following departments will keep the designation as special municipal employees, moderator, planning board, sewer commissioners, cemetery commissioners, plumbing and gas inspector, board of health, fire department members, building inspector, dog officer, and elected officials, council on aging. So this was brought up recently when we were looking into special municipal employees. We found that far more employees have it than probably should have it in many cases. So that brought up some concerns and some questions of why these departments have them and whether we need to keep that status for them or not. So that's basically what we were asked. Do you have anything?
No, I think we should review all these and decide. Then I sent out an email with other towns have policies. So I think it would be good to come up with policies to have somebody fill out, you know, why they would need this, what board, border boards would be affected, and then we should review these every year. So probably thirty, sixty days after boards turn over, we should review special municipal employees and decide if we're going to keep them or not.
Keep the status.
Keep the status, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So at least we were on top of it. It doesn't, you know, these are from the nineties, like no one.
Yeah, they just, I was surprised that they had that many.
Yeah.
They didn't even know. So, um, did you have any?
I'm good. So can I suggest?
I think it's actually a really good idea, too, to have a policy for reviewing them.
So I don't know. We've got a couple of requests, but most of them we don't have requests for, so maybe we should just do those first.
Okay.
Unassign them and then talk about the ones that we got requests for.
So we got one from Dario for the moderator. And then for the plumbing, plumbing inspector. Town clerk. Okay. Yeah. But there was nobody else that.
That's all I received.
Did you receive any, Mr. Farrar?
No. We have the chief.
Fire department. I could make a request. I did speak with Jim on that to modify currently what's on there. I think might be more appropriate for the reason kind of want to help back in the nineties as to why that may have happened. Specifically, the full-time firefighters, any full-time staff, if there was in fact that, it's my understanding cannot be on that list. However, it may be appropriate for designate as all on-call firefighters as special municipal employees, specifically because some of them may serve on a board or committee. They all receive one site per year for the most part, whether that's the fire department. Some may, or two who may have outside business or something. So I believe that was the reasoning behind that, and it would be appropriate to modify that on-call staff, you know, on-call staff. So there was no interference with any full-time staff employed by the town.
Okay. And as counsel had stated, special municipal employee status should not be full-time.
Not in full-time, right.
Well, the moderator is not a full-time employee. The election workers are not full-time employees, nor your staff. So let's go down the line. And we'll. So. Plumbing, gas inspector. Fire department. And election attendants. So I would say planning board doesn't need it. There's no need for it. I would agree. Sewer commissioners can't see a need for it. Cemetery commissioners saying, then not requesting it, don't see a need for it. Board of health should not have it.
Want to make a motion as we go along?
Well, I'm just.
Okay.
Going along and we'll just, we can make one big motion and just do them all, right?
Okay.
We don't have to do individual motions for each of them.
Yes, yeah.
So and then we could address the four that we have in front of us. And we go from there. And then council on aging. I can't see of any reason why to have it.
Again, there's no, yeah, there's no request for it, so.
All right. So we want, you want to do a motion? Do you have anything?
I agree with. I, I, I agree with what you just said.
And did you have any that you thought should be on there?
Uh, no.
So if you want to make a motion and remove, remove the special municipal employee status from all the ones.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll make a motion to remove special municipal employee status from the planning board, sewer commissioners, cemetery commissioners, the board of health, the building inspector, the dog officer, the council on aging. Second.
All in favor?
Chi hacker, aye.
Vinnie, vinnie's.
Aye. David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. The step, special municipal employee status effective tonight has been removed from those departments. And if we can just put a memorandum out for that and we'll sign it, saying that that's been done and give it to the town clerk. And notify each of the boards that they don't only have a status, if they do want it, they present it to us in writing and defend it. Okay, so address them in order here. First one, we got Dario, Mr. Nardi. He sent us an email on that. Some private dollars stipend from the town on the role.
I don't think he even needs special municipal employee status. He can still get a stipend, though. It almost doesn't affect why it's our.
Might have been for when the moderator at one time might have been a council of the town or represented members or represented parts of the town, might have been a lawyer.
Oh, for Vinnie, like Vinnie or somebody.
Might have, that, that might be why.
Okay.
Okay. Oh. Mr. Nardi, are you on tonight?
Dario. Yes, I am.
How you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good. And you're looking to keep your special municipal employee status?
It's, it's, I, I'm not really sure it matters, to be honest with you, like Mr. Ferrera said. I think it's, I'm just, you know, I am a municipal employee in another municipality in Massachusetts. I just didn't know if that was going to impact me being the moderator. I didn't believe it did, but I just wanted to be present in case there are any questions, or I don't work for the town in any other capacity, so I don't think it's a problem.
And you, you're not going to lose your stipend. This doesn't, doesn't affect your stipend at all.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, it really doesn't change anything for you at all.
Yep. No problem. Just wanted to make myself available if there was a question.
All right. Are you okay with it being removed since it doesn't affect you in any way?
Yes, no problem.
All right, thank you, sir. Do you have anything else for us?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. So let's do, let's just address them and motion it.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to remove the status of special municipal employee from the moderator.
Seven. All in favor?
Which I hacker, aye.
Vinnie, vinnie's, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, plumbing and gas inspector. Okay. This is for Beck Plumbing. And Christopher Jones. Did you want to read that in the record? Um. Well, Mr. Jones, are you on Zoom? Okay.
Have you read this one, Jim?
Uh, no, I haven't.
I mean, he has a backup.
They're like, there's a second.
Yeah. And he doesn't serve on a board.
Right. He was just the inspector. He has a backup. I mean, that's what our electrical inspector does.
Right. Yeah, but he works on municipal buildings and is the inspector for our town.
Our time, I think. Well, he doesn't speak, can't obviously inspect his own warding, so he would only inspect, you know, permits that, you know, he didn't do the work on. And, you know, he gets paid and compensated for doing inspections on there.
He's not a full-time employee.
No.
And he's paid per inspection. I don't know.
Should we, we could have town council review it?
Yeah, I would have town council review that one.
Yeah.
Because if we remove it from him, it might tie his hands to be able to do working. You know, the buildings, too. Cause he's still a worker, but he's not a full-time employee. You know. Yeah, I would say let's get town councils review on that.
My gut, though, is the electable inspector doesn't have it, so.
Yeah, but that's because they probably didn't request it.
Just, yeah.
So I'd see, just to make sure.
Okay.
Either one of them, because they're both in the same situation. It's the same question. And, you know, just get back to us and we can put that on the next agenda. We'll follow up with that one. So. So we'll table that one till next meeting. Okay. So fire department members. And Chief, you wanted to present something about that?
Oh, yeah, I think, I think it can be modified and cleared up a little bit more. I think the intention, you know, from what I understand, back in the nineteen nineties, I did reach out to the previous fire chief and kind of tried to pick his brain over what the thought process was back then. And I think it was, it, it was, you know, there was some merit behind it regarding the on-call staff. And I think that was the reason why you had several members over the years that may have run a business on the side. You know, they also received a signature from the town. They were, you know, they weren't full-time employees by anything. And there are still a few members, a hand, very small handful of them that still have that. I think, I believe I have maybe two members that are on a board or committee outside of their call fire department status. So, uh, you know, I think there's probably some merit there to, to, to keep that in place, however modified, to strictly on-call staff.
So I don't know that, I think it's, it's the whole department or nothing.
Uh, I, we did talk to Jim. I believe he thought it would be appropriate to say on-call members because it specifically, it specifically takes them out and spells out who it applies to within there.
It's not individual.
Yeah.
But a section, and your on-call fires are sep- firefighters are separate from the full-time employees.
Yeah, I mean.
They do the same thing.
They do the same, they're, but it's, it's not, they're not, they're not full-time employees. They're not benefit employees in any way or, or anything in the sense of, you know, full-time benefits and stuff. So, you know, I mean, certainly if the board would like to have town council review that, too, I'm fine with it. This was unannounced to me, even that they were designated at that point as there. But I believe that was the intention and the purpose behind it was because, you know, there are still a couple of members that may have a private business, that may do town, uh, work for the town time to time on vehicles or other things. Uh, and, you know, I believe, you know, that was where the whole thing came from, and that's where they decided to keep that.
I would vote to go town council. Just because this is brand new to everybody. Let's do it right. Make sure, first of all, that we can subdivide the department and that, second, that they needed it all.
Okay, I concur. Let's get a real decision on that one.
Got a question there.
Yes, sir.
I have a clarifying question. What's the?
Can you please just identify who you are?
President Faco, President Farron. Do we know what the Massachusetts general law is that covers municipal employees? Is it two sixty-eight A?
Yes, two sixty-eight A, section twenty.
Because, okay, on section ninety of that law, I'll just read it. One second. So I'll just read it because it retains specifically the fire department. For the purposes of chapter two sixty-eight A, the district shall be considered a municipal agency and each part-time firefighter of such fire district and any person who performs professional services for such a fire district on a part-time intermittent or consultant basis shall be considered a special municipal employee. So you might want to, so.
So that wouldn't even warrant us giving them status because they would have it default.
And we can't take it away.
If that's, they would have it by default if it was the law.
Yeah.
It's the same, yeah.
The only, I would still have them review it. The only thing that concerns me is it uses the word district. And usually when it comes to Massachusetts, when you hear the word district, it refers to a water district, uh, which is different than a municipal setting in the sense that there's a fire tax and other things that are incorporated in there. So I guess you may want to ask that question. If that's true, that they meant fire department municipal in general, or if they truly meant a, a water or fire district. Because we do have a few of those around this area, and there may be a legal difference between these two of them. That's my only thoughts.
You know, it's, it's a clarification on that.
A fire district and a fire department?
So they're fire departments, but Palmer, for, for example, Palmer is a fire district. Palmer, Three Rivers, Bonneville are a fire district. They have a fire tax. It comes from the, the, the users of the water district. There's a fire tax that comes from that. There's not a whole lot of them around, but they do exist. So, uh, and like I said, Palmer is an example of that. There are others that, that are like that, too. I believe, uh, Three Rivers is also part of that. Uh, so, you know, ours is a fully municipal department funded by taxpayer money. However, a district, from my understanding, or when I hear the word district over the years, it, it, you know, it can refer to a geographic group within, within a state. But specifically fire districts usually, um, refer to like privatized, almost privatized slash fire departments that are, that receive a fire tax, uh, for using this, the water system or something. And usually the wa- usually it's like the board of water commissioners that actually govern and oversee the fire districts.
No. Yeah, it's clarification on that one, too, and make sure we clarify the whole district thing. Um, if they got it by default, they got it by default, but if they don't.
That may be the case.
Yeah, and then we, we'd have to look at it. Um, we get basically a two or three-part question on that one. All right. Um, so we're tableing that one till next meeting also. And election officials. Okay. Thank you, Chief. So the town clerk sent us correspondence on that. And. Ms. Laura Stock, Stockley, uh, the town clerk, uh, is requesting that we maintain, I'm a special municipal employee status for her, um, election workers. So what do you, you ready to do the whole thing?
So I have two questions. First of all, who are the people? I, I want more specifics because if we're going to review this in a year, I want to know why we did it now, so we remember next year why we did it. And then also, I'm not sure. Again, this is to prevent issues with ethics. So if you're on a planning board, you work and you, for elections, I don't see any conflict in the first place that we would need to be relieved from this happen, right? I mean, that's, that's what it is. It's for, you know, from.
Right.
Ethics.
Right. I mean, essentially, these election workers are just temporary, one-day, you know, workers.
I think as long as they're on the ballot for election, you don't want that, right?
Right.
Or you don't want that.
Right, she's having one.
So even if they're on a board, what, what would be the conflict that they're trying to, because they are gay? They're not, they're not trying to do a permit, or they're not trying to do, uh, like, are, are any, do any of them own a restaurant? The board of health would inspect or something like that.
Uh, I'm not, I, I don't know all of the workers individually. Um, you know, they would be required to have, you know, they got a permit of some sort and they are compensated as a employee of the town. They would be required to disclose that on a disclosure form with the town clerk. Um, but I, I don't.
Right, so a lot of times you, you cure the ethics violation by disclosing. So. Now, having this status may not necessarily. So if I can suggest, can, can we ask her for specifics?
Sure.
And then, again, you go to town council and say, here's the situation.
I let them, send them their letter, town clerk's letter, and see what they feel about that. See what Jeff Blake's opinion to that, because they might not even need it. It might not be justified at that one. But if it is, and you can see, well, yeah, this, this situation could arise. Because I don't want to lose election workers either. But I really don't think it falls into that category.
So either.
Because I don't think this, again, we're, we're looking at really things that affect, that could compromise a decision. And, you know, that would be the best interest of the town. And, you know, things like, you know, planning board. They should not have it because they're making decisions on permits and, you know, development within the community. They shouldn't have that status. And there's other areas that, that shouldn't have it. And I could see where it would directly interfere with their position. And then it could be used for reasons not in the best interest of the town. So. Yeah. So I, I.
She wasn't sure either. So she said she.
Yeah.
They've been sorry.
Like I talked with her about it, and she's like, I don't really know if it even affects anybody.
Honey.
So. Um. I can't really think of a reason why.
Yeah.
It would arise in a conflict with an election worker. Yeah. Again, get more detail and then let Jeff Blake know.
Yeah.
And so we got those four, and then we can revisit those four um, for our next meeting. Well, the three, because the moderator, he doesn't really need it, didn't care. So it's for the plumbing, plumbing inspector, the fire department, and the election officials.
We're reading China, but then federal election.
Yeah, the same question. I would just ask, just in case we have that, so if they turn around and do ask for it later on, we have the answer. It's probably the same exact thing that it would be for the plumbing, it was basically the same, just different training. So. All right. And then the other ones, we could do the letter up to tonight. Well, not tonight. I don't expect you to do it tonight, but we'll do it up. Stating tonight was the starting point, and then, um, good for that. Okay. You guys agree with that?
Good. You did all right.
Yeah. Very good. Right after we talked to Mr. Nardi and.
That's right. That's right.
It doesn't really affect him in any way.
I don't. I'm just getting.
All right. All right, so moving on. Uh, police chief, monthly report. That guy again. How you doing, chief?
Good, chief. A lot of good. So in the month of July, we logged approximately twenty-two thousand, twenty-three calls, when twenty-three hundred calls were surveyed. Hundred and nine incident reports were done. Four of those were on view arrest, one one arrest, thirteen summons arrest for COVID-19, thirteen protective custody.
Three.
Uh, yeah, three. Yeah, I can read tonight, too.
You should put your glasses on.
I'm stuck for vacation, so.
You're still on vacation.
Seventy-two motor vehicles off sixty-five, I changed. At the beginning of July, I met, uh, in where they have a B H N, Behavioral Health Network, opened up a new site. I believe it's ninety-six, I forget. I think it's ninety-six Main Street. It's just people who came right onto where their P D is. And it's a site for family resources. I took a tour of it. Now, with the, the people that work there are very nice people. But they, they support families. The families lead anything. Uh, they try and give them support. Uh, a lot of times we get out, uh, UCF needs a place for doing custody exchanges or, uh, visitation. And they have the whole, it's an old bank building, so it's very big. They have rooms everywhere for kids, for parents that lead with T C F and, and, uh, their, their children, and so. Uh, they provide a lot of services. And I just, I just listed a few, you know, like they give parenting programs, support groups, assessment services, and information, and referral services. Uh, so if there's a family that's having trouble getting food and clothing, they, they'll help you with that. And there's more stuff on their website, that W W dot F R C N A dot org. Um, they have sites throughout, from this one where it just opened up, so it's a great resource. I also conducted two ride-alongs with new regional dispatchers that are starting. Um, after being postponed twice, the park finally, finally had to touch Chuck then. Uh, I couldn't attend that day that they rescheduled. They rescheduled, right? So Officer Cody took, uh, took our Humvee over there and, uh, surrounded his good children.
They represented well.
He does a great job.
Yeah.
On the twenty-fifth, I got to meet with the new play log principal, Casey Ganefield. And along with Superintendent Duck, we sat down and talked about the upcoming school year, which coming next week, which turned around, it seems like yesterday we were at graduation.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
So I started talking, was that school today? It was like, it was just yesterday. It feels like the summer didn't happen. Uh, the twenty-seventh, we all met with the Mass Wildlife, uh, talked about a few problems up on Tomlinmore Street. And on the thirty-first, Detective Allen Officer Sujan started a three-day class to become certified in car seats, stuff and storage.
Very good.
Uh, they did it, uh, they're, obviously, they, they graduated, but, and we have an event scheduled on September ninth. So on September ninth, from noon to three, it will be at the Common. They will put in anyone's car seat that comes down. They will put in anyone's car seat that comes down. They will also check the car seats that you have in there and make sure they're installed properly. And also, they'll be there too to do, do that drug take back. If anyone has any prescription drugs they wanna get disposed of, they'll also take them that day too, so we're getting disposal for them.
Okay, great. Very good. You can have a flyer for all that?
A flyer?
A flyer.
Or a flyer.
Not a fire.
It's a, we put it on the, uh, uh, we, we put it on the website, yeah. We put it on the website and it's on Facebook, get it. So there was a flyer out there. They fired off. They don't do that anymore.
No fires. The other chief wouldn't like that.
Yeah, right?
Alright, well, very good. Um, do you guys have any questions?
Twenty-three sixty-two for calls logged. It seems busier than normal. Or is that about right?
It varies between two, like fourteen hundred.
Someone picks up a little bit.
July, we had a string of break-ins to cars.
Yeah.
So they, for a couple of days, they were going nonstop with the calls.
So. And any of that resolved?
No.
Open case?
Yes, can't talk about it. They, well, they're professionals from Connecticut. They wear gloves and masks. So the videos we have, they have shows going with gloves on and masks and so it's hard to, it's hard to grab them, yeah. Locking vehicles, everyone.
Yeah.
They look for unlocked vehicles.
You park on the street or in your driveway, lock your car.
Yep.
What name was that?
Yeah.
Well, I think this is just a rash of this, so it's not.
It goes through.
They hit an area and the exact same night they hit Barry and, uh, Hardwood, I think was in LA. Um, they will take your cars, people leave the keys in the cars, they will steal your car. Unlock with keys in it, it's double, don't let me. So, locking cars, don't, don't leave keys inside.
Does, and it helps if people have security, like, um.
Lights that go on.
Well, the cameras too, right?
Cameras, yeah. Like you said, we've had a few that picked them up and
Get in and out so quick.
They're in and out so quick and you can tell they're wearing, they're wearing white gloves and black masks. Motion lights help. Motion light goes on though, they'll skate out.
Yeah, you know, it helps. Big dog.
Yeah, that too.
Yeah.
Big dog. So, what you do is you put the big dog in the truck at night and leave it unlocked.
Absolutely.
It's a big surprise when you jump in it and try to steal that truck. Not advising anybody to do that. Just a joke. Alright. Um. Alright, um. I did talk with a gentleman. Since we're on it, that was the email?
Yeah, I don't know what the.
So, he is a soldier assigned to, um, a unit in Massachusetts. And they, they dealt with chemical, biological stuff. But he also deals with a lot of incident command stuff. He's an incident command trainer. Um, and he started a new company, he has a company, and it's based in Palmer. And they deal with active shooter supplies and, um, incident command stuff, um, labeling. Um, you know, in events, they have like you know, casualty collection stickers, so you could put on, put on somebody that's, um, say, you know, a tourniquet has been applied, so they know when they, that a tourniquet has been applied and it's a large visible sticker and where it is. And they're just like, quick checkbox. So when they go to the, you know, the emergency room, so if you wrap them up or anything, they, they don't have to completely unwrap the person. They know there's a tourniquet on their left leg and it was applied at this time. So, um, yeah, he had a lot of good ideas and he's like, yeah, come down, you know, we'll show you the shop. You know, see, see what we got. And they were very much in, you know, he was very knowledgeable about grants for public safety. And he's like, did you guys get this grant? Did you get that grant? Did you get this grant? And I'm like, uh, no. And they're like, can you give me information on those? Absolutely. And it's like, okay, yeah, anything that opens up things. And he's like, I could do training for you guys. I'm certified in this, I'm certified in that. I can help you guys out. And then talking with him, he actually did one of our incidents where he was a, an evaluator at one of our incidents. So he graded us, um, for an incident that we dealt with. Um, and very good, very knowledgeable man. So, he, he, I'm like chance encounter with him and, you know, we just so happened to get tires changed on both of our vehicles at the same place. And we just started talking and like, oh. And he's like, yeah, but I'm out in the Western Mass. I'm like, oh yeah, where? He's like Palmer. I'm like right down the street from me.
Palmer, where's that?
And I'm like, I'm for Warren. He's like, my neighbors. So, great guy. I think it'd be a great opportunity to, to see what he can offer and maybe pick his mind a little bit on grants.
Yeah.
You know, he was talking about, he goes, you guys can get so much equipment from these grants. And he was talking about all these different places that he helped get grants for, for the equipment. And I'm like, wow, it'd be it'd be handy, you know, like drones and all kinds of stuff.
Funny you say that. We were putting a grant together for a drone and we did all the work and found out that the grant doesn't supply on a, on a man vehicle, so.
But he, he was talking about all kinds of stuff, all the equipment, all the active shooter equipment, the response kits and everything. He's like, there's grants for all that stuff. I'm like, really? Like, okay. Cause I know it can get quite expensive. It gets expensive, so, um, you know, bolt cutters and things like that.
Well, yeah, we saw that. Those bags that we are.
Expensive. But he's like, you can get all that for free. Teach us, teach us how. So I think it'd be a great opportunity to go take a trip to his shop and just
Absolutely.
See what he has and pick his mind and see, see what we can do.
I'm good to make.
Doesn't hurt to make friends.
Not at all.
So that, that's what all that was about. Um, it was good to see he's local too.
I was looking for the first part of that because it said, nice meeting you and discussing with the chief. So I'm like, where, where's the first part? Who is Scott?
Yeah, no, he, um, when he sent me an email, because I gave him my card, he sent me the email and followed up. He's quick on response, he's quick on getting back and, um, he has a whole team of people. Um. So, yeah.
Sound good.
Again, it's good to walk through a shop that specializes in that stuff. And maybe he has equipment like better bolt cutters or better this or better that. Maybe it's lighter, better equipment. I don't know. You know, it doesn't hurt to look.
Exactly.
Um, do you guys have anything?
Thank you, world. What you do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, chief. Uh, you gave up a good word.
Thank you, Zach. Alright, next thing on the agenda is review letters of interest to fill the vacancy on the Board of Health until the next town election and possible vote to fill said vacancy. Okay, so we got, we asked you to ask a question for legal and Jeff Blake responded back um, on that one. And you wanna fill us in?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, in your packets, you'll have a response from town council. Um, Jeff had indicated that, um, uh, certainly the, um, you know, the, um, the position of, um, Board of Health, um, could be filled, uh, by a, um, uh, an individual that worked, worked from the highway, um, emergency management, insert. Um, there would be a process in which, um, it would have to transpire. Um, the process and the steps are, are laid out in the email, um, described. And the process should also include that this be done on a yearly basis. Uh, and if this person was to become a, a, a Board of Health member, um, uh, you know, this should be done immediately. And if the person is not to become a Board of Health member, um, then this, these steps need to be followed regardless because of the other positions that this person currently holds. Now, this may or may not be already happening, um, but it, it, it needs to happen moving forward.
So it was publicly, publicly advertised, right?
Right. And what they mean by advertised, it could either have been on the website or in the newspaper. We did, I know the website.
So you'd have to do a full disclosure.
Right.
Okay, and we're talking about Jimmy. And it has to be performed outside the normal duty hours of the highway department job. So. What do you mean about the Board of Health role is not compensated for more than five hundred hours per year?
So, um, if there was a, a, a way in which it could be proven that a Board of Health member, um, puts in more than five hundred, um, you know, hours per year, um, and there's a compensation would reflect that. Um, then it, then, you know, then there could be a potential, you know, problem there. Um, and so, I mean, I, I, I just don't think that the, 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 the small stipend, um, would, would, would equate to five hundred hours of work.
Forty hours a week?
Right, yeah.
What are, what are the forty hours a week? The Board of Selectment approved the exemption of this interest from this section. Is that special municipal employee status?
Um, no, it would be just the exemption. I think, um, I think in his, uh, in his email, it mentions that special municipal employee status wouldn't apply to this person because he has a full-time position in the highway department.
And this is like a totally different situation.
Correct.
So there'd be a lot of steps to go through.
Yes, as long as these steps were, were fulfilled in the town council's opinion that this person could qualify to serve.
Yeah. And then we also have another applicant
Yep.
um, for the position.
Received another applicant.
Yeah, for Mr. Joseph Conrad. Um. He has enough sufficient time to be in the Board of Health Department during the day. If health problems within the town should arise. Maybe not have any current paying job or position or board within any department. And I respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen to consider me, um, working in position now in the town. So Jimmy, there's a lot of stuff we have to do. Um, to be qualified for the position, disclosures and stuff that you would have to do to do that. And you're very limited on your time when you can do things because you can't do it in conjunction of your highway department duties and other things. And honestly, you know, I don't know if you wanna go down that road because there's a lot to do. And personally, I don't know if you have any spare time. You work a lot. You know, you're always working. Um, you know, doing things. And you know, I, I don't wanna take away from highway department or anything else that you do for the community, because you do do quite a bit. And you have a position as an emergency manager. And I could see an overlap with emergency manager and Board of Health because there are times where, um, there's houses being condemned or being vacated due to health reasons. And where an emergency manager might need to step in and review it too, because it could be a danger to the public around that area. So I could see where that could overlap a little bit too. So. Um. What do you think?
Um, so two things, yeah. Jim does a ton in town, so I don't know if this is stretching him. Um, he's gonna have to go through this process for the other position, right? Uh, and I'll say that, you know, Joe has wanted to get involved in something for a long time now. For whatever reasons, other applications haven't worked out. So I just, I kind of, we need to work, Joe. But all the reasons.
I'm, I'm happy with both. I know both will do a, do a good job. Now, it's only a kind of thing, I know. I agree that Jimmy, you, you work thirty hours a day. I know, but it's, uh.
And this is just, no matter who we appoint.
You gotta run for reelection.
Both people can run in the next election. So there's no precluding anybody from being on Board of Health. Um, starting in May for the next two years.
Right.
This is just total intro.
So. We'll give you, since you applied first, what do you think, Jimmy?
Well, the thing is, you, there's this process, uh, applicant, employee, school, whatever.
So, um, regardless, Jim, I, I'm not sure if you've completed these, this step, these steps yet for any of the positions that you currently hold. But, uh, town council has said that, you know, we'll have to go through these steps, um, you know, for, for your current positions. Even if you weren't selected for the Board of Health.
Great. Um, anything else? And.
Either way, it sounds like I get it.
I, I just think adding this, it's a lot in the world. You're here a lot. You know? I was here last night when I pulled in, first person who I see is you. Yeah. And it's like, it, it's almost like instead of giving you another position, we should give your, uh, you know, uh, caught in one of the rooms here in the office because you live here. Yeah. Um, and I appreciate everything you do for the town. But work-life balance, man. You gotta have, you gotta go to the beach once, once in a while.
Well, it's good he was stepping up because nobody else was.
Right.
So that's extremely admirable.
It is, but he can't do everything.
I know, yeah.
He can't do all the jobs. So, yeah, I, I, I think it's great that you were stepping up again. But, um, I think it's a lot. You know, it's a lot on one person. You know, and, yeah. I think this one, I'm gonna have to pass on your honest one. Because you do do a lot. You know?
There's someone else that's interested.
And, and Mr. Conrad's interested. Are you still interested, sir? Okay. Did you wanna say anything? Before we? You always wanna say something. Did you wanna say anything before we?
Oh, I'll let you.
Well, people get tired of hearing me speak, believe me. I'm tired of hearing you speak. You're good. What do you?
We're up to the board.
You're completely neutral. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Now, I I would say, you know, I'm in favor of Mr. Conrad. Again, I love your dedication to the town, but you just do too much. There's not enough hours in the day for you. And I don't want to take from other, one of the many other jobs that you do already for the town. And, you know, I think Mr. Conrad would be perfect for this position too. He definitely loves research. He got the history of the town, he knows the area, he knows the people. Um, and I'm not saying you do, you do too. But you know, Mr. Conrad, you have free time. You can dedicate it to the town. Spread the wealth. So what do you think?
Yeah, I'm in agreement. Don't take me wrong, Jimmy, I'm just gonna give you a little bit of time free for yourself. I appreciate that you stepped in.
Fill it with the emergency side.
Yeah, yeah.
And believe me, you're gonna be getting some more work with that part, so now I think when we go meet this gentleman in Palmer, you probably should come too because a lot of that relates to what you do. So it's not like you're getting too much free time, just enough. So I I I'm good with Mr. Conrad. I think he'd be a great option and I think this would be a perfect opportunity and a perfect job to him. Yeah.
All right, so I'll make a motion to appoint Joe Conrad as a member of the Board of Health until town elections on May seventh, twenty twenty one. Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy's aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Conrad, you are appointed to the Board of Health until the election. Now you want to say something?
I'm not gonna deal with roosters crowing.
All right. All right.
Until such time that the planning board makes some rule on
The plan- planning board doesn't do that. That actually comes out of the Board of Health Department, animal regulations and policies. So you would have to propose an article, create an article and propose it to the town for a town vote on something of that matter. Currently, we have no animal um restrictions or bylaws other than dogs in our community. So there's nothing controlling farm animals or roosters in our community. So people are free to have their roosters.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you. Across the road from me is some tree, the red horned owl that whoos all night long. At five AM, the crows start.
As wildlife does.
So since I live only seven hundred feet from the west water traffic light, you can tell it's there.
We do have a lot of wildlife in the town, in our community. Um, last night I had an experience with a very large black bear on Douglas Road and um I upset that bear a lot. And he was not happy that I was driving on his road. And he proceeded to jump up, bring his claws out and grab a tree and shake it as I was driving by him because he was upset because I came around the corner and he was right there and I startled him. And it's wildlife. I know the bear is upset. I know. Leave the bear alone. Let, give him his time and leave. So, but that's what we have in our town. We have wildlife, we have crows, we have hot owls, we have hawks, we have bald eagles.
Can I make a comment? We we should all appreciate what we have here. One day, I went to a friend's house for a barbecue and he lived very close to the Mass Pike. Oh. We were doing our cooking and we were yelling at each other because he couldn't hear because of the cars. So we went inside so we could talk.
Can't even enjoy your backyard.
So let's appreciate nature, roosters, birds, whatever it is, river, because it's a lot worse than other places.
Yep. Personally, I like hearing the owls. All right, anybody have anything else? Good?
Yeah.
Are you good, sir? All right. Do you have anything else?
I'm good.
All right. All right. We're on the review, review proposed draft for updated job description for building and planning secretary and discussion on possible vote um posting times for the position. Okay, Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, in your packets uh for this week, we have a updated job description. Um, when we when researching the job description, we had come up with a a position description that was dated since two thousand and four. Um, so it's quite old um and definitely needs some updating. Um, I took a a look around, uh, you know, what similar communities our size have um and looked at the roles and the responsibilities within that department uh and kind of comprised it and morphed it into a draft for your, for the board to review. Uh, I did send it out to individually the planning board members to have them look at it as well. Uh, and uh, then had offered some minor suggestions. So I mean, if the board wants to really look at this, you know, in the next week, you certainly can um and, you know.
I'm good with it. I think it looks good.
Yeah.
This, Mr. Leece? So I'm good with it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Post it.
Okay.
Yeah, let's get somebody hired. No, Jimmy. Not enough time in the day.
We'll get that posted.
Yep, thank you. All right. Next one. Uh, review comments made by the Attorney General regarding annual town meeting, Article twenty eight and thirty. Okay, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um in your packets tonight is just a letter that the town clerk had received uh from the Attorney General's office um with comments uh that uh as town meeting goes, um any changes to our bylaws always get approved and reviewed by the Attorney General's office. Uh, sometimes they come back and make common suggestion revisions. Uh, they did uh approve all of our uh our articles, so they all are approved. Um, Articles twenty eight and thirty, however, did have some comments um and some suggestions. Um, and they had s- suggested that we run this past town council, uh which I did again. Uh, and town council is of the opinion uh that there there needs to be nothing adjusted. So, um, really?
Yeah.
Okay, so the the comments are are noted, um, but town council feels comfortable um with the the position. Okay. So I just wanted to, you know, to obviously bring this to the board's attention. Uh, we did take care of this and we did send this to to Jeff. Um, and, you know, he's of the opinion that that we're more good as 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 it stands.
Okay. You have any questions?
No, sir.
All right, we're good. Thank you. Hey, next thing on the on the agenda is discussion of possible vote to authorize a town administrator and or chair of the Board of Selectmen as the town's signatories for the FY twenty two, twenty three CDVG contract.
So moved.
All in favor? Oh, you got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy's aye.
Um, David Dufrain, aye. Motion passes. You're authorized.
Is that quick enough for you?
Enough.
David, I'm gonna do the side there. In Derek's opinion, you decide there.
See, you got to act up this already.
Just get the motion ten seconds ago and I'm already put to work. Okay. Next thing on the agenda, discussion of possible vote to sign Chapter ninety reimbursements for road improvements to Bragg Road and Beemis Road.
Can we go over to Bragg Road?
Next one's from the Highway Surveyor, Jeremy Olson. Chapter ninety. Wait, do you have anything on this?
Nope, these are current projects that are um um that have either been recently completed or are currently um being completed. Um, these are standard forms that need to be submitted so that the town um will uh get the reimbursement in time.
Okay. So you guys good?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Look great, defense looks great.
Any questions?
Bill, sir? All right, make a motion to authorize the town adminis- oh, make a motion to accept the reimbursements from Chapter ninety for Bragg and Beemis roads.
All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy's aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Was there anything else we needed to do on that?
Just sign them.
Okay. Next thing on the agenda is warrants and bills.
Make a motion to pay the following warrants for FY twenty three. Number one twenty four vendor, ten thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Second. All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy's aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following warrants for FY twenty four. Payroll number nine, forty-nine thousand three hundred forty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Vendor number eleven, two hundred fifteen thousand one hundred thirty-eight dollars and twenty-four cents.
Second. All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy's aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following bills for some cleaning, thirteen hundred fifty dollars, W B Mason, two hundred twenty-five dollars and ninety-six cents. Kelco, sixty-five dollars, seventy cents, Harlan Leasing Corp, eleven hundred seven dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second. All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
Billy's aye.
David Dufrain, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
I make a motion to pay the following bills for Joey's, Richi Hacker, for soon. Thirty-five dollars, ninety-eight cents.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Billy's aye.
David Dufrain, aye.
Richi Hacker stands.
The motion passes unanimously with Mr. I Hocker abstaining. Okay, and minutes. So motion to, well, uh, motion to approve the minutes for twenty-two, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three and July seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. Okay. So I have to do them individually, don't I?
Yes.
Because he wasn't here and, yeah, all right. So I make a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. And Derek has approved that, right?
Derek has seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Billy's aye.
David Dufrain, aye. Um
Richi Hacker abstains.
Mr. I Hocker was in present form, so um the motion passes unanimously. And then you're gonna make the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for July seventeen, twenty twenty three. You have August seventeen.
Oh, I'm sorry, it is August.
Were they both August?
No.
No. So that was June, yeah, June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, and August seventeen.
Motion to approve the minutes for August seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
Okay, I'll second that. All in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Dufrain, aye. Mr. Billy's was absent for that day, so um the motion passes unanimously. Okay, so town administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, um, report's a little brief tonight um because we had uh quite a bit going on this week with um wrapping up some of the end of the year closeout stuff um within our financial departments um and getting some job descriptions ready uh to go out, obviously. Uh, the one tonight that was approved, um, uh, we also have a the posting of and we're s- we we have gotten some candidates um applied with a position uh of full-time police officer already, um, and that closes on September eighth. Um, this uh posting for the planning and building um uh department uh will get posted uh after this meeting tonight. Um, and we'll be, you know, accepting applications um uh starting from that point. Um, as I reported uh at the last time that we had met, um we had a um a resignation within the Board of Health. Um, however, we were able to uh to work something out, make some adjustments. Um, and that person has now rescinded uh their res- resignation um just today. So it's not on the agenda, but it is in my report um that that uh the office is gonna be modified a little bit uh in terms of, this is important for the public. Um, the office will be open Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. Uh, and it will be the same hours from from eight-thirty to four. Uh, so on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, um, the office will definitely be open, it will be staffed. Uh, that was agreeable by the with health as well. Our goal here for moving forward is to also, uh, you know, there was some internal candidates that were interested in the position um is to possibly possibly work out a way in which we can cross-train uh an individual um internally to maybe pick up some additional hours um or um, you know, when our current person is gonna be going on a maternity leave um or um, you know, to fill in some gaps when the office is closed on Thursday. Um, so we're going to be ramping that up. Uh, we're really excited uh because the person that's currently in there is excited to cross-train uh somebody uh to uh fill in some gaps uh when this person's out. Um, and so um we're not gonna have to have access for that position at at this level. Uh, so um along with that, um obviously, um, when I started the conversation talking about the financial piece, all of our financial team, the uh treasurer's office, assessors, tax collector, accountant are working very diligently and sewer department because they're gonna be part of this as well. They're working very diligently to 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 get us up and running full steam with Vadar, okay? That's a huge undertaking for even a small community to get that data uh and and to get that um, the account set up um to to understand the system, to go through the training process. So it's a learning curve for everybody. Uh, and everybody is doing a great job with asking questions from Vadar. Vadar has been getting Vadar has been getting back to people, Vadar has been providing trainings. Um, it's a learning curve, it's gonna be difficult, it's a, it's just something new. Um, but, um, I have full confidence that we're gonna be able to, to meet, um, where we need to be to get it fully up and running, um, in the next uh, few months, so. Um, and it will be just an ongoing process. Uh, so right now, not only are we dealing with getting that system up, we're also looking at closing out fiscal year twenty-three, right? So fiscal year twenty-three has to be closed out, um, and then we're gonna talk in October about getting, you know, a certified free cash number, um, which I'm cautiously optimistic it's gonna be a strong number. Uh, and then what we'll do is we'll roll right into, um, a special town meeting in the fall, um, and setting the tax rate. Um, so, uh, the financial department is, uh, very busy, they have a lot on their plate right now. Um, and so, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very thankful for all the hard work that they do, uh, and that they are very diligent in learning this. It's, it's, it's a very technical, difficult situation that they're all in. So, uh, that's where we are with that. Uh, I did reach out to, uh, Anne Goby this week, uh, the new rural affairs director, um, who were the Commonwealth. Um, she's coming to town next Wednesday to meet with me, uh, to talk about some rural, um, initiatives, uh, to talk about public safety complexes, to talk about needs of, of Lauren. Um, and we're gonna have a, a, a great discussion about that, and to start the piece of, she's in a new role as a rural affairs director. It's kind of like a cabinet position for the governor.
Yeah.
Um, so she, uh, knows how Boston works, uh, she's familiar with, um, projects in rural communities, and she will be a great asset and a great pipeline for us, as she has in the past in her previous role as a senator. Now more so, re-establishing that, that, that connection, that communication piece with us in her, um, and ultimately to the governor. So, um, you know, that's critical, um, and, uh, she's agreed to come out, um, on, on, on Wednesday, the thirtieth, the next week, in the morning. Uh, tomorrow, uh, self, I think some members of the board, Mr. Chairman, uh, we're gonna go to Gardner, uh, because, uh, there's gonna be an announcement, uh, for CDBG, uh, funds, probably whole state, right? So the governor's gonna be making an announcement at Gardner Town Hall. Uh, we're very fortunate enough to get over one point one million dollars, uh, for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, uh, for CDBG money. Uh, that's a great, strong number. Um, I, when I met, when I met with CDAC this week, uh, they were very excited about that number. Uh, and they're, they're very optimistic of what projects they would like to continue to expand into town. I know it was mentioned about Otis Street and continuing on, um, in the, uh, school street and Pros- Prospect Street neighborhood, uh, with making improvements over there. Um, so I think it's gonna be very positive, um, to continue on and, and help, um, uh, revitalize some of the neighborhoods in that and complete that section of the, of the town. We've water, sewer lines, uh, we roads paving, um, you know, really taking care of a lot of the issues over there. Um, so, uh, that's what we, what, uh, what we've been doing since the last week. Um, and also, um, we're, um, you know, we're, we're currently, um, as I mentioned at CDAC, we're in a little bit of a different, difficult position in terms of, um, you know, the community compact grants just came out again, okay? But the town was a recipient last year, so when I wrote the community compact grants last year, there's a problem, there's, the, the issue is that we can't apply it here, okay? So we have to have a pulling off here, and we have to finish the projects that we've already been, um, currently awarded. So we were awarded last year, obviously, sixty-five thousand dollars for, um, for software, um, for a, the installation of software, uh, for a financial management system. We are, uh, we were awarded twelve thousand dollars for, uh, budgetary software. Uh, we were awarded, um, um, a, a portion to cover feasibility study, a financial feasibility study for a possible, uh, public safety municipal complex. So those projects are all in works. Uh, those have not been finished, we're currently trying to diligently work to finish those projects. Once those projects are done, they're closed out, I submit a, a, a formal report to the state. Um, then we will be eligible to re, reapply for that. There is a couple other, uh, community compact grants that we didn't go after last year, one being, um, uh, around broadband and fiber. Uh, that may be something that we may wanna look at this year in light of our, um, tour and our discussion with, with City Fiber on, um, August thirty-first. So, um, but that application is not until after the first in the year. Um, and so we, we have some time for that. Um, there's another application, um, that we could do, um, for regionalization. A regionalization grant, so if we were to, to partner with a neighboring community, whether it be Westbrook Field or Ware or Palmer, one of the Brookfields, and we were able to put something together at a regional approach. Um, we could potentially do something there this year, because we didn't do it last year. So, um, on the grant side, um, there are some that we're looking at. Obviously, the One Stop for Growth, I've been working with, uh, Chris Stumpy and CMRPC with getting our applications in for the One Stop, we're waiting to hear back, um, on the projects that we had submitted, uh, for this year. We'll probably, we'll be hearing something, maybe, I guess, maybe mid-September, early October-ish. Um, and then obviously, uh, there's a new Maya grant that, that recently came out that I'm going to be applying for next week. Um, and hopefully, we can tie it to some cybersecurity. Maya is, uh, really looking to do something with cybersecurity, um, and some of the, um, projects that they were suggesting was the, uh, multi, uh, factor authentication, which we already did. Um, uh, but a lot of communities didn't do that, and so that their insurance, um, uh, coverages are, you know, could be questioned or possibly lapse, because they didn't do that, so now they're providing a grant uh, for communities to do that, but we already covered that. I'm looking at maybe a project where we can put up some, um, some firewall protection for our highway, our senior center, uh, possibly even sewer. Those, those computers are not tied in as we just did with fire, um, those are not tied in. Um, so I would like to see if maybe we could maybe, um, be able to write a grant for something like that. What we got? So, uh, obviously, we're, we're keeping a, a, a keen eye on any grant opportunities that come up. Uh, we're also diligently working to get our price quotes out there for the senior center. We're waiting to get responses back, they're due on, um, on August thirtieth. Um, and we're also, uh, in the process of issuing a, uh, uh, an RFP uh, for a, um, sledge hauling contract for our sewer. Um, and we're also working on the vituminous concrete RFP for our highway department. Now I will say that the vituminous concrete, um, uh, bid, that the town has historically used, um, needed significant revamping. Um, and so, uh, I've been working with town council to get it revamped, to get it, uh, cha- uh, to get it, uh, corrected to modern-day standards. Um, and so, uh, that's taking a little bit longer than expected, but we're gonna have a product now that we'll be able to use and have no question about, uh, you know, you know, possibly having a, a protest of a bid down the road. Um, so, um, this is, uh, very important, it's taking a little bit longer of time, but we are getting.
And also, any questions?
No, no.
One more question. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay, so, moving on, anybody have any new business?
No. Bill, sir?
Okay, old business. Um, old business, when we did a, um, walk-through of the mill complex today. Um, one of the things we noticed was the berm wasn't re-established um, per what the Corps of Engineers is recommending for the levy. So if we can, um, mail a letter to the business, letting them know that that has to be re-established, it was not approved, authorized work. There's unauthorized work to levy, and it is part of the levy system, and they need to put it back. And I don't know if we wanna give them a timeframe to get the work done, because if you say, you're just gonna put it back, do it next year. Yeah. It doesn't give them a timeframe where we need it done, and that means they have to dig up the con- the, the pavement that they put there, because they paved in there. So they have to dig that up and re-establish the berm and seed it, so it doesn't wash away.
Ninety days?
I'm doing ninety days. Yep, but that's one of the things we wanna address, because there was a deficiency that we had on our report. Because that, that was taken out, it was not authorized to do, it's.
Well, it definitely needs to be done for them.
Yeah.
So even if you're in a closet giving them ninety days, if they weren't to come expected.
We have something saying.
Well, have we, have we brought the issue up to them before? This is really the first time we're taking, okay, so we gotta, you gotta give them some time.
Right, I think ninety days. Ninety days, it's three months to get it done, and you wanna get it done before winter, because they have to seed it.
Yeah.
And I would let them know, you have to remove the asphalt. Um, install the loom and, and, and stuff to the barrier, and that they would need to put it at the water level matching the rest of the, the terrain, because you could see right where it was, it is about that much removed. And you can see the waterline going across the levy wall. They have to match that with their final product. And it has to be seeded on top of that. So the final product being compacted dirt that's there.
Yeah.
You know, they can't throw a bunch of softer and then let it settle down six inches.
Yeah.
Because it's below that level line again. Um, we just don't want Corps of Engineers digging us again, of saying we didn't do that, and you, you know, we've been making progress with things on the levy. And, you know, we're gonna have to do an article, create an account for money to be inspection, to do inspections and maintenance on the levy system. We're gonna have to address that as part of the, a budgetary item from now on, because we do have to inspect the pipes there. We have to exercise the valves. Um, there's a lot of maintenance we gotta do per the Corps of Engineers. Because, again, if we don't do that, and something happens with that levy and it breaches, we have to pay for it. So, and we're responsible for everything downriver. So, the Corps of Engineers won't help us if we don't get that levy in compliance.
So, Jim, it could be worth contacting, um, the Corps, to get specs on how that should be. It may need to be compacted to some sort of standard rule, and maybe they want a certain kind of grass seed.
I'll get the verbiage from them, you know?
Yeah, and I would lay it out with steps, you know, remove the asphalt, put this in, put this in, put this in. And then they have to, you know, if the grass dies, they gotta, you know, that here, so. Needs to.
Yeah.
Things to have grass.
That was the gist of it, right on, now on, Jim, the levy?
Yeah, that was one of the main things to worry about. After one inspection, everything showed up and that was done.
Yeah. Yeah, we seen that, we got reminded of it, because we got so much stuff on our plate and so many different things happened, and we looked at it like, oh geez, we still need to correct that, so.
They have the picture of that.
Yes, yeah, that's the thing. You have pictures of it. So that was my old business, you guys have any old business?
No. Sir?
Okay. Um, correspondence, um, we have a, uh, letter from Mr. Ramsey, Bill Ramsey. Um, and he is resigning his position from the Veterans Council. Okay. And then we have a letter from the treasurer. And there's a final judgment on seventy-one Pine Street. And we got that saying it was a tax foreclosure. And did you wanna give us any details on that one, Mr. Ramsey?
Sure, uh, we just received this, um, letter, uh, two days ago. Uh, and this is referred regards to a tax title property, uh, seventy-one Pine Street. Uh, the town has now received ownership of it. So, uh, we're going to have to, uh, I'll notify the insurance company, uh, that we have it. Uh, and, uh, we'll have to get it physically, uh, ordered up. Uh, and hopefully, uh, the, um.
Well, it says the building was removed.
Yeah, there's nothing there.
Yeah.
It's just a plain site fire, right?
Yeah, it, it got, yeah.
It was a fire.
Is there a shell there, or?
Nothing, no.
Nothing?
It just might be a little garage in the back. Yeah, shed or something at the back, but it's small.
Alright.
But pretty much it's just a piece of land now.
Just there, okay.
So we, we can sell it and, you know, we develop her, I guess, right?
So, um, with this, I would, uh, I would, you know, obviously, uh, the treasurer is, is in charge of, of, uh, tax title properties, um, the deposition of the disposition of those. Uh, so, I've been, I've been, uh.
How much land is there?
Small site, it's small.
This smaller?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have to make her, or maybe less than.
Yeah. As a potential site for public safety complex?
No, no.
No, too small?
This is smaller than mine. Oh, no, no, it's not.
If you wanna wander chat.
I've been, um, mentioning and, and working with, with the treasurer
Yeah, yeah.
to see if we could, um, you know, potentially have a, uh, a tax title auction soon. Um, obviously, with everything that's going on with, uh, Vadar, year-end flows, there's a lot of moving parts here. Um, and we are working on that, um, offering any assistance I can, uh, to, uh, to get that, uh, done. Because there's, there's, there's a decent-sized list that the, that the town currently has possession of properties, um, that the town could potentially sell at an auction and retain, um, money.
Okay. Um, yeah, a- again, we're not in the business of owning these properties, we need to get them off our books and put them into the hands of people that wanna develop them or maintain them.
Pay taxes on them.
Pay taxes on them. You know, it's, we're losing tax money on these things. I know, I know Ray is probably giving us the die over there saying, now, get that tax base going. So, alright. Um, anything else, sir? Okay. Alright, um, you guys have any questions about that?
No.
Okay. Okay, moving on, comments and concerns, do we have any comments and concerns?
Oh, I would just say, so at the CDAC meeting the other, yesterday, um, Chris brought in tow with him a new, uh, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission employee, Joe Ferguson. Joe's been on for seven weeks, right? And just kinda learning the ropes, and, um, yeah, it's good, because they need people. Have people move on, and so we have a new person there, and it was a great guy.
Very good, very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Do you have any questions, vocal, sir? Comments, comments? Well, so comments, concerns. Uh last week, I attended an event in the the common and the park. It was a um. Say flying dogs. Um event, it was a really good event. Um put on by the Warren Library. Um did a great job with it, you know, uh. The owner and his dogs, very, very trained. It was it was good to see. During that, um some of the moms brought me over to the gazebo and showed me the. There's a a quite a few um bottles, nip bottles and wine bottles. Around the gazebo. And I picked up a bunch of them, but. Again, you know, kids were playing there and these things were there. So I let the departments know. Um Jimmy ended up going out there and cleaning them up and in one of his many jobs. And cleaned up the bottles and stuff around there.
Thanks, Jim.
Again, you know, chief, if we got people out there and they're drinking in the middle of the night.
Yeah, just people in there, they get it out anyways.
Again, somebody's doing. Yeah, but somebody's doing something and it's right in the middle of our town and they're leaving their bottles there. Um they're dropping the alcohol bottles right in the bushes and stuff, so we just wanna make sure we make the common. An environment for everybody to attend and kids should not be looking at wine bottles while they're trying to play in the park. Um if we could just.
Did you say the park?
Yep. Not Dean Park. No, it's in the common by the gazebo. Those bushes around the gazebo. Um they were dropping the bottles and all all this stuff and they were leaving nip bottles on the. The um gazebo there. I cleaned up those, threw those away and Jimmy went went into the bushes. Dragged himself through all those bushes and picked up all the wine bottles in there. But um let's just make sure people aren't using it for anything other than enjoyment. Not just getting loaded out there.
Go to Glenda's if you wanna drink.
Yeah, go to Glenda's and take that stuff home and drink it or whatever. We don't need to sit in our park. And do that. You know, other people wanna enjoy it too. Jimmy went out there and cleaned up the stuff. Um is the lighting good there at night? In the gazebo? Because it looked like some of the lighting was out a little bit.
There is a good spot that shines at the flagpole. Uh but on that back side towards the sidewalk side. Also, yeah, that is where it ties.
Yeah.
Throws off that whole uh can't see the common no longer from outside of the car wash. But see, someone's sitting on there.
But what about the lighting in the gazebo?
Uh that's only turned on during events. There's no actually lights.
Wouldn't like the bushes.
May- maybe maybe we should get lights that they turns on automatically at night. Yeah, maybe we should look into that, work with the parks and get. Get something so it turns on at night because I think one of the problems is is dark over there. People coming out of the liquor store, wherever they getting their alcohol from and sitting in there and drinking. And yeah, we should probably keep it lit up from now on. Yeah, what do you think, chief? You think that would help?
I think it's gonna help, yeah.
Right. You guys good with that?
Yeah.
I think it's a nice feature of that town. Why wouldn't we wanna light it up? Yeah, make it look nice. As long as we have LED lighting in there, it's not that expensive to keep it running.
Is that one switch to turn on the lights?
Uh there's uh incense points in a roof of it. It's been five or one.
Yeah, they have recessed lighting, but.
Christmas lights and stuff, we could kinda just put a permanent L B Christmas light around it.
Is there a switch that turns it on now?
Uh the lights, usually when I do lighting, it's a Christmas light that put them on tires.
Yeah, but how are the gazebo lights turn on? Because it's recessed lighting, isn't it?
Yeah, they ran by the power, not solar.
No, but how do you turn the lights on? Is it a switch?
A key switch.
A key switch? We put a key and it turns.
Yeah.
We could probably have the electrician look at what he can put there because maybe they could put something in there that it's.
Just like a like a.
It turns on at night.
We wanna put motion lights. The the lights that are currently in there, those are random. I probably wanna put a motion light. Or we could have Christmas lights.
I think the Christmas lights.
Yeah, something that lights it up. So e- e- even if the police officer's driving by in the car can see if somebody's sitting there. You know, because right now it's dark.
They make those road, no LED road lights.
Yeah.
It aligns the. Bottom rail with that. You probably enough in light.
Yeah, I mean, that would be an easy solution to try first.
Yeah.
Right, we don't need the electrician. The lights are cheap.
See if it helps.
Yeah.
We look into the road lights and they're more covered for all year long in there. More well. All right.
Would that be parks or?
Parks, yeah. Yeah, it would have to be brought to parks, so.
So see if you can get with parks and, you know, see if we can do that. I don't see why they would wanna disagree with that because they probably don't want people doing drinking there either.
Yeah, tell them the reason why.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the lights are probably twenty or thirty bucks.
Yeah, but it's still funny.
Yeah.
Such a tight budget.
Do they have money in their budget or is it? See if there's some way we could purchase them or where they. Yes. Right. In the meantime, chief, can you just make sure you guys are keeping an eye on it?
Yep.
Thank you. Um so that was my comments and comments and concerns. Anybody from the public? Mr. Conrad?
On the subject of properties for sale, saying Thomas Church is for sale. I think the asking price is four hundred thousand. Which is a steal, which is about forty to one with that property. I know that he's just a bishop that asked me if I wanted to buy it. I said, well. I ain't get that type of money. I would, but I don't have that type of money. There is a decent house that goes with the church. Large apartment lot. So if anybody was thinking, going into religious business. We have a church.
Well, thank you very much on that, Joe. Um. I don't think I'd make a very good preacher. Uh Rich, I think has that in him. No. Oh, was he?
You know that.
No, I didn't. I sensed that somehow with you. Um but thank you very much about that. Anybody else have any um comments or concerns? Right? You've been quiet lately, sir.
I'm usually upstairs.
Not you, Ray.
Ray Ray's absorbing now. He's in like a soak up.
Yeah.
Mode. I I I guess I do have a question, just when there are tax title properties that the town is in possession of. They they have to go to auction by law, is that my understanding?
The den- the the disposition of a uh tax title property can be done in one of two ways. It could be done by a public auction or it could be done through an RFP process. So the town could solicit um, you know, the public through a uh uh, you know, a. And a form of procurement box process um and list the properties and then select them, you know, the most advantageous. Uh for the town or it could do a uh a uh, you know, public uh auction. You know, there's pros and cons to whatever vehicle the town would wanna do um to um. To get those um properties back on the tax walls. Uh usually with a um an RFP process. Uh it's usually maybe um a uh a specific property that uh the town wants to see developed a certain way. So you can put certain conditions, um restrictions uh as to how. Development is going to be taking place on that parcel. Um usually typically at an auction, they're very limited conditions. Um that you would put on and then it would be just sold as is to the highest bidder.
Can I ask you a question, sir?
Good, thank you.
Anything else?
I'll be honest.
All right.
I would wait at seventy-one Pine Street as a third of an acre.
Right.
So it would.
Tiny.
Yeah, it would be auctioned, you know.
Right. It'd be great for somebody, one of the butters have big backyard.
Yeah.
Auction. All right, um anybody else have any comments or concerns? Lisa, do you wanna explain why you're not on TV tonight?
Because my coworkers aren't in patients.
Okay, so if people are wondering why this stuff was not televised via WCAT six. Um which is our public access, it was because people had vacations, it was already done. And it was only Lisa by herself and Lisa can't run all the. The uh equipment up there by herself, so um.
But the Zoom.
But the Zoom will be, yeah.
It takes, I think, twenty-four hours for it to finish, create the file or something. So I'll get back to Travis.
So we'll be able to put that on there.
Send it to me and I can put it on there. In fact, I owe you some Zoom videos I can send.
I know.
So we'll get the Zoom video out there for people to see, um so they can see what happened and see what was done, but. Um just so you know, it was already vacations that were planned. And they just happened to fall on tonight, tonight's meeting and that it was uh. They didn't have enough staff to run the equipment after it, so. All right, um and thank you for clarifying that for us, Lisa.
You're welcome. Just a reminder, Chairman.
Yes.
That we still have an advertise that we need, we only have three of us. So self- channel says, I don't know if it's self- channel, but we need help. We can't do our first sheet of capital on the P. I can't do one.
No, Jimmy.
Oh, I love that, yeah.
What do you mean? Is a job you won't do here?
I'll get you on Wednesday.
All right, so yes, again, you know, if you're interested in helping out WCAT six. Um and learning the system and working with TV and media, uh please contact them. Uh they would love to help. Right, so moving on, next meeting is August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three at six P M.
We're gonna take next week off.
No.
We have to.
We need to go over. So we're taking the next meeting on September third.
Okay, yeah.
Which fall is good because we got labor, every day we. So.
Okay.
We care. Can't function without you. All right, so the next thing is.
How should we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
The Chi hacker, aye.
Lady, biddy, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. We are adjourned. Have a good night, everybody.